Yeah, it was really stuck.
Yeah, well, they... You know, I got a real... I'm brochuring on the air. HVAC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Before we go with adopting tonight's agenda, we did have a closed session. Only item D, liability claims, day farm returns for Paza pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point five was denied. All the other items are still open. All right, so we have a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Oral communications. So it looks like we have a couple of slips that are in regards to what's on tonight's agenda, but I have one from Jamie that's not on tonight's agenda. Okay.
Good evening, council members and staff and mayor. I did get to say it again, and fellow citizens. I learned a big lesson at the last meeting I was in, and this is it. When you're being treated for a major concussion, don't go stand in front of the council and try to make a point because you don't remember what you said, nobody knows what you said, you can't figure it out. So I'm going to give it a shot tonight. Things are better. There were a couple of points that were important to me that I wanted to talk about. They were important then, they're still important. And one of them is with reference to price fixing. I talked a little about prices and a 1 percent reduction in salaries, et cetera and so forth. And I tried to make a point that it's an arbitrary number. It's like the 1999 that we charge, people charge for a product because they know that people won't pay more than $20, et cetera, et cetera. And so my point is this, 1 percent of a person's salary, if they're on a very, very tight budget, is an awful lot of money. And that has to be thought about. Instead of just an arbitrary number across the board, what does that number mean, really, to people? In addition to which, there are some things that we have to be really cognizant of. We don't have a large police department. We do depend on fire department personnel from other communities, and our schools are really in trouble. And so these are places we have to really look at for putting our money and making sure that these departments, that these services are never undercut. They're very, very serious for all of us. Those were some of the points I wanted to make. Then there was a point with reference to authority and who speaks with authority. And some time ago, I asked a council, who here will speak for the people? And I asked every council person, and every member of you, Mr. Mayor, said, the council will speak for the people. And so how do you do that? How do you speak for the people? You need to know what the people think. And so my point about being sure that there is respect for each of the people who gets up and has something to say, that that respect will be applied equally to all people who come to speak and that no one would be disparaged in any way. When I was 20 years old, some of you know this, I was in the convent. I was in the convent for a long time, but I was in the convent. I was 20 years old. I suddenly got sent out to teach school, and suddenly I was in a position of authority. And people were bowing and kowtowing, and it made no sense whatsoever. The parents were far smarter than I was. They knew more about their children than I did, but because of the authoritative position I had been put into, I got all this respect. But I learned early on that when our bones go into the grave, if that's where they go, it doesn't matter to the dirt what position we had, what our title was, what our job was, what our name was, it doesn't matter. We're all in the same boat. We're all equal, and we have to have that respect for people. So authority doesn't come with a title. Authority doesn't come with an election. Authority doesn't come with a job. For example, Wayne Hendricks has authority. He got up and spoke before the council with authority, and he should be listened to. When citizens do homework, meaning they are paying attention to the agenda, they are paying attention to the activities of the city, to the activities of the council, they should be listened to as persons of authority because they've done homework. When they get up and speak, may not agree with them, but think about the fact that they've done some homework to give you information. We can't constantly, as I said, be saying, Hal, what do you think? Clay, what do you think? John, what do you think? Randy, what do you think? Ask the folks who stand up here, let them say what they think because they're not just popping off stuff off the top of their heads. Michelle Salin speaks, she speaks with authority. Why? She does her homework. She knows what she's talking about. Dana Dilworth speaks with authority. She does her homework. Paul Buscall, when he speaks, he speaks with authority. In addition to which, these citizens have brought people with positions in other agencies that do have authority, that do have information. And I believe that the council is going to speak for the people, the council has to listen to the people. So when someone comes up here, they cannot be disparaged in any way because if you do, for example, disparage anyone in any slight way, what happens is the people watching on television with people sitting here become discouraged and think, well, they don't care anyway. And then that makes for a very, very weak community. None of us are going to be here forever, and none of you are going to be in this position forever. And there are people out there today that they're becoming prepared to sit in the seats you're in and to help this community and to lead this community. So we have to be ready as a group to give respect to all of these people. Clara Johnson speaks with authority. She has an interesting authority. She has the authority of having been in your position. She has the authority of not being in your position, and she has the authority of being brave enough to say what she thinks, what she knows, what she's experienced. So I'm asking that the council take into consideration who really has authority. You don't get it with a title. You don't get it with a job. You don't get it with an election. You don't get it with pay. You get it when you do your homework. You get it when you have a point of view to share, and everybody has some of it. Everybody has some of the piece of the puzzle. So in spite of the fact that my attempts at the last meeting were paltry, to say the least, I wanted to come back and ask that you take these things into consideration when listening to the people who have done their homework or trying to make their point of view known, no matter how they make it known, they're making an attempt to assist you to make wise decisions. You have a tough job. It's a tough economy. It's a tough time, but you know you're not in it alone. All these folks that come out here, they're in it with you. All these folks that are home watching the game and the council meeting, they're in it with you. And it'd be very wise, you know, it's wise to take counsel. It's wise to take wise counsel. And as I used to say to basketball players, practice does not make perfect. Perfect practice makes perfect. So you have to do things right in order to get them right. And I think doing them right means paying attention to the people if you're going to represent the people. So thank you very much. This was my second attempt to be clear. Hopefully this time we got it.
I think you were clear the last time.
I wasn't so sure.
You were.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. All right. Okay. Oh, Dana.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Now it's getting on three months that between the RDA successor agency and coming to the council that I have been asking about the programs that the city has for low and moderate income people in terms of preservation of a housing stock. And I've asked city employees, I've spoken in the oral communications, I've emailed council members, and I have gotten absolutely zero response. And it, the most recent letter that I sent was intended for the oversight committee that said if the city of Brisbane cannot tell what they have established in the protection of low-income housing and low-income housing support, then that money needs to go back to the state because it seems pretty disingenuous for you to be in possession of a lump of money. And every other city, I understand Pacifica has a program, I understand South, San Francisco has a program, and although I'm in personal need when I speak to the people who are using community block grants and things like that, I wonder why I have to reach beyond my own community. And so with due respect, I ask that you respond to my inquiry or I will be here every council meeting and ask again and again because it seems tragic that something of this importance goes ignored. Thank you.
All right. You know, if I may, you know, I did see your email, and I did not respond to it because I didn't know how to answer it. Okay? And so, you know, I did send it to the staff. I think we're still in that area where we're not exactly sure what the rules of the road are. Yeah, a couple of years ago, we were able to use some of that money for affordable housing to partner with Rebuilding Together and work on a couple of homes. But that was two years ago, and that's when there was an RDA. Last year, we couldn't use that money. And I know that you were going to partner with Rebuilding Together last year, but it didn't work out for you guys. And so, not to say that another opportunity with Rebuilding Together, you know, couldn't happen, but, you know, that's a separate issue. And so, but I would like to ask staff to chime in on, you know, what possibilities there are of using affordable housing funds to help folks who have issues with their homes.
Could I just, oh, one quick thing to add. I mean, I hope there's a response there. I'll give you a chance while you're thinking about the response. I did want to note that the oversight panel did receive your letter, Dana, and the panel directed the staff to respond with the most up-to-date information. I don't know where that stands in the staff preparation, but the panel did direct the staff to do that.
Yeah. We have been working on a response to Dana's specific question and working with our oversight board attorney as well as the staff to do that. And you should be getting something fairly quickly with regards to that. The larger issue, I think, ultimately is one for the city council to wrestle with as we go forward. You are now going to be sitting as the housing authority in the new world or new arrangement that we will have. And we, right now, I think, are going through a process of trying to figure out exactly what the funding is going to look like, short term and long term. And I guess one thing I would just say is that, you know, the whole redevelopment unwinding has been a real process of trying to understand the state law, trying to understand the markup of the cleanup bill, which changed the rules a little bit. So we've been kind of devoted to trying to get that in place, and staff has been spending a tremendous amount of time with various audits and various reports that have to go to the state in a timely sort of fashion. We're going to be working on that pretty heavily through the end of this calendar year or at least towards the end of the calendar year. So I think it's going to take some time to get through that and really start to talk about, you know, and then to do some estimates of what we think the redevelopment or the housing fund is going to have in terms of funds going forward. There is also, I think, concerns about, you know, is the state going to come back in and raid those funds at some point in the future, too? That's a speculation, and that's something we're going to have to kind of think through in terms of the timing of how we do certain things. So there's a lot of issues. I appreciate the speakers', you know, frustration. We share the frustration that it's not all that clear in some of these cases exactly how all this is going to work out. But I would just ask that there be a little bit of patience because we've got to do this right, and we've got to know what we're, what the rules of the road are and what we're doing, and it's going to take some time to ferret through this. I think what Dana's speaking to is some sort of low and moderate income housing rehabilitation program. We have not yet had one of those in the city of Brisbane. Doesn't mean that the council may not choose to do that going forward with the housing fund. But the housing fund, we all know for one thing, is going to be a lot more modest in terms of its resources than it was under the redevelopment agency model. So again, you know, there's a lot of issues there, and I suspect that, you know, we'll have something back for you to start thinking about sometime early next year, and then we'll kind of go from there.
Can I get a clarification? For keeping up the all affordable housing inventory that we have, would, for example, senior housing be one of those entities that we could use the fund to remodel or refurbish? Or I'm not sure whether my question is...
I think with regard to the senior housing project that we have in Brisbane right now on visitation, I think those kinds, for the most part, those maintenance issues are responsibility of Bridge Housing, which is the one we did the partnership with. But, you know, that's something we probably need to also take a look at in terms of any ongoing obligations that we think we might have. The other product, obviously, is the Habitat for Humanity product, and I don't believe we have any liability there in terms of maintenance going forward either. But that's a good point and something we need to investigate and make sure where we stand as we have this conversation.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else for oral communications? All right. So move on to the consent calendar. Yeah, I did want to pull item B.
Yeah, me too. Okay.
Okay.
Submove, approval, fight or may? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the reason that I wanted to pull item B, I guess, I don't know what your reason is, Ray, but...
Probably the same.
I just wanted Jerry to come on up and give us an update and kind of hopefully share the love of the farmer's market. So Jerry, if you can come on up, please. So how have things been after six months?
I think they're going great. You know, I think that everybody, the vendors are still happy. We're still in a rotation. A lot of what's just recently happened, a lot of the seasonal markets are now starting to come to an end, and because we've determined that we're going to try to stick through and be year-round, we're starting to pick up a few more of the vendors that are looking for a place to come and sell their wares. We just recently picked up a fresh fish person. We've got a new salmon person out there. And, you know, the volume's probably not what everybody would like to be, but, you know, in a perfect world, we're working at it. I want to thank the city of Brisbane for being supportive throughout, you know, by helping me with the dues. Like, last week was a little bit slow, so I gave close to $300 worth of breaks on the fees. And that's what we determined we were going to do to keep people coming out there. As we get, you know, more and more vendors, then there's just not quite enough sales. And so we continue to try to, you know, attract more people. And you've done everything you can with having a sign out there 24 hours a day on the Bay Shore, helping us, helping me with the fees at the park that we're putting into more signs. And I think we're going to go ahead and purchase a few more. I'm working with my accountant, who has a few other vendors that might be able to help me get a better deal on signs right now. West Coast Farmers Markets has grown from two to six, I think, since we got started with you. And to tell you the truth, Brisbane by no means is the slowest. I have, yeah, I've jumped into a few locations that, you know, second thought, I probably shouldn't be there at all. I'm at the College of Kenyatta College in Redwood City. And trying to attract people to a location that doesn't have any business on a Sunday is a lot more difficult than I anticipated. I've also gone back and tried San Jose City College during the school day, and, you know, it's 10,000 students, but nobody's really into cooking vegetables and things like that. Kettle corn is doing pretty well. Hummus is doing pretty well.
Top ramen.
Yeah. So, you know, a few of those things are a lot slower than Brisbane. In the meantime, though, I've put together opportunities with Orchard Supply. I'm going to be opening in quite a few Orchard Supply parking lots. That's going to make my organization a lot stronger, and from that strength, I'll have more access to more vendors. And with that, you know, we'll be able to continue to rotate vendors in and out. I'll tell you that Beckman's, who comes all the way from Santa Cruz, is still coming out and supporting the market. And they've been doing this a lot longer than me, and that brings up a question that I wanted to pass to ask the council. They pointed out to me, which I knew, that Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday, and they thought that if we moved it to the Wednesday, just the day before, that that would be a lot more advantageous to everybody. So that was one question I had of the council to see if that was okay, and there was nothing going on in the park the Wednesday before. And this just came up, so I haven't spoken to Caroline about it, so it's kind of a surprise to her. The other kind of points that Caroline and I did discuss, moving into the winter, at one time, we talked about maybe having earlier hours because of daylight savings. But by being out there and seeing the traffic flow, really, the last 45 minutes of the market are when we're the busiest because that's when the people that are coming from work are able to attend. And with that in mind, I've got two thoughts. And the first is for us to bring, you know, lanterns and stuff and to continue to keep the hours three to seven as we move into the winter months. And if it doesn't work, if it gets too windy, too cold, and, you know, with all that happening, I've got a little bit different feeling now than I had before. I was thinking that maybe if we moved to a Saturday or Sunday, you know, like nine to one during the winter, we wouldn't have to worry about darkness. And, you know, the sun's still a lot warmer nine to one than it would be, you know, at seven o'clock at night. So to carry through the winter months, because at one time, we were thinking about trying to find a building and, you know, trying to get out of the cold. Well, you know, we could get out of the cold by coming a little bit earlier on a different day. And so those are the thoughts that I have at this point. And, you know, I'll tell you that the, for the most part, the vendors are still happy. They're showing up, and, you know, they love the city of Brisbane.
Yeah. Well, you know, I haven't heard a single complaint about the farmer's market because it's all just been so positive. You know, and I, you know, you're thanking us. I mean, I want to thank you, you know, having the guts to come to Brisbane when all the other farmer markets, farmers' markets, you know, were passing by because they said we were too small. And it's great to hear that we're not the lowest in volume and that, you know, you want to go through the entire year. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the other days as long as it's not taking away from somebody else who's already kind of in that slot. And I don't know how we kind of work that out when you're asking the council what we have in our contract.
The Second Amendment that's before you tonight specifically provides that he can select any day of the week as long as he gives the city 24 hours prior notice so we know they're going to be set up. So basically, Jerry can operate whenever he wants on any day, and it was for that purpose.
Okay. So in some ways, that means that if we wanted to have two days at the farmer's market, we could potentially do that? Or is that...
The way it reads right now, it says on any single day during the week, so if you wanted to allow multiple days, just delete the word "single."
Got you. Okay.
May I?
Right.
Sure.
Okay. I have one reaction, and then I had a number of the sort of minor things that I wanted to be clear on.
Right, right.
I mean, I have, you know, my first reaction is, you know, shifting various days and so forth when it maximizes warmth and attendance and so forth. I mean, I agree with that, too. The problem that I'm concerned about, and I'm sure you know about this, too, you don't want to be coming a different day every week. That'll just mess up everything. So there needs to be some kind of continuity.
Yep.
And, you know, maybe the shift on Thanksgiving might make sense because people would understand that as long as they know ahead of time. But if you want to switch to Saturday, you know, in the middle of the day, and as you say, it's a good time in terms of what's going on in the other former markets, a lot of them have closed down. You know, I guess it's okay with us as long as we don't have other, you know, reservations in the park, but it needs to be something that continues for a while. You know, can't be changing Saturday one week, Thursday the next. You know, that, as you know, that won't work.
I agree with you, yeah. No, any time I would do anything like that, I would, I would, I would take a poll of the people that are shopping the market, you know, to see what their feeling is. Right now, my intent is to continue to operate exactly as we are, and we're going to compensate for the darkness by bringing some lanterns. So the only day that I'm really looking to try to make a change would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And anything else, I mean, I'm just, I'm always looking ahead. I know that at one time, we said, you know, can you find us a building and get us out? You know, we're not a bunch of wimps. I mean, at least I'm not. So some of my vendors are a little bit, you know, they go, is it windy out there? We don't want to come. And I'm going like...
They're not real farmers.
Come on out.
These are salespeople.
Exactly. You know, I find that the ones, the ones that worry more about the weather are not the owners, they're not the farmers themselves, they're the employees. They're the, they're the employees of the farmers. And so, anybody that's actually out there trying, trying to make a wage to, to pay off some bills or, uh, they're, they're a lot more apt to, uh, to show up and, and try to work through the market.
Right.
And so...
Okay, that, that's good. Now, I have a couple other minor things. You know, the, the, the new amendment does give flexibility on the day. But it doesn't, uh, change the provision, as I understand, in the original agreement, that really specifies hours. Uh, because it says three to seven during the summer and between the hours of two and 5:30 during the winter. So, if we wanna, if you wanna stick to the, you know, the three to seven, or you wanna change to nine to one, or what have you, I think we need to build a little more flexibility in, uh, the hours.
That is absolutely correct. It was not intended to change the hours, so if there is a desire to do that, we would have to mention...
Have to change the agreement, yeah. The, the amendment, anyway.
Correct.
To make that more specific. And the other thing that, that I noticed, um... I think we discussed once before that we wanted to make sure that certain kinds of services would be available, one of which I think was electricity, and, and I think they've been using that for, uh, you know, for the music. Uh, and the original agreement says that they're not gonna use any utilities, including electricity. And it also says that there is no sound amplification, which is in the original agreement. Uh, and yet, I mean, they're not doing a whole lot of amplification, but a little. Uh, and so, it seemed to me that if we're okay with the way things are going, and I certainly am, then we oughta make note of that, too, in a revision to the agreement.
I concur with that.
You want me to... The, no amplified sound is in number nine, and the no electricity is in four. So, I, if, if we're, we're all in agreement with that, then that should be modified and specified in, in the amendment to the agreement. I'm sure it's okay with you.
It's, it's fine with me, and Ray, as always, you're more on top of my business than I am. And I appreciate you.
I'd like to hear about that. I do read this stuff.
You do a great job.
Yep. Since we're talking about electricity, and if they're gonna be here at night, um...
It says we could provide...
And how do you, how do we feel about them using, uh, an extension cord to light some lights, that it's safe for the people that shop?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna encourage it too much. I, I rather my vendors try to bring lighting, and there's a lot of new LED things out there right now that, that, um, that one of the vendors has found. And they're gonna try to illuminate the tents and things like that. And so, you know, I, I, I don't wanna encourage cords running back and forth to where people would trip over it. And I don't want them to believe that, that it's, they could, they could just go ahead and utilize the power. The only people that I've ever, uh, have allowed to this point are the, are, is the music. And, and so, I've run one cord when we've had the music, and that's the only thing I've done.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't, you know, allow it for vendors to use electricity. It'd be more just like a, a couple of lights out there, so that it's, it's safe for people to, to walk...
You mean, lighting the general area instead of lighting the tent?
Yes.
And I think for, for a, a small amount of general lighting, as long as we're not, you know, am, making it an arena.
No used car lot.
Tennis car, tennis court.
With that thought in mind, um, you know, moving to the later hours, I noticed that the amphitheater area is, is lit up pretty well. And so, we could move the tents closer to that, to be closer to the light during the, during, if, if it get, if it gets to be too dark, and that's, you know, that's a problem out there. By moving closer to the amphitheater underneath and surrounding it, we'd be closer to the light source.
Okay, now, I know in the agreement, it's got the map with the site, so...
Might have to change that, too.
Might have to change that as well. But I think you see, we're pretty, you know, we wanna be accommodating, 'cause we think you, you provide a great asset to the community. And so, we, we want it to work for you.
And I don't wanna recreate, recreate the wheel, you know, that, that we've got going out there. I'm just saying that I've been, I've been noticing things, and by, by looking at when the, when the traffic flow is coming and things like that, the last 45 minutes are when we're getting the most foot traffic right now.
Is that it?
Yeah, just, um, I found it interesting when you started talking about things being rather slow at Kenyatta and San Jose State. Uh, over the weekend, I went to Apple Festival in Placerville. And on my way, um, the next day, I was also at the Davis, um...
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market. And it is correct that college students don't wanna buy vegetables to go cook. However, baked goods were going like crazy. Uh, prepared foods were going like crazy. Packaged food, like salads and, uh, you know, those lavash with turkey. So, maybe you wanna look at what you offer, um, that could maximize your sale.
I, I do do that, thank you, though. Thanks, Zepi.
Sure.
Hey, Clark?
Yeah, Jerry, I, I know when we started this endeavor, we looked at, you know, hopefully, this will be successful. And, you know, and I, I like the ideas of adding the flexibility, and I'm still not keen on the three trucks.
Have you ever had any three, have you ever had trucks?
I don't give a head three.
I think the most I've ever brought was, uh, was, was one, one at a time.
Yeah, that's what it seems, so...
And I mean, I, you know, I, I could tell from, from that. And, you know, there's, I've got, I've got friends in the community that work in restaurants and, and own restaurants. And at no point have I tried to do anything that I thought would be against the community. So, I, I backed down quite a bit on the trucks. And I, I, you know, it's, it's there, but, um, we're, we're definitely not pushing that at all.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, the, the...
I have...
Sorry, can I pick it back up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I think the colder the weather gets, the more attractive trucks are going to become. Just for you to keep that up.
Along those lines, Zepi, that's, that's one of the reasons, like, you know, the one truck that did come, um, when I, when I go out to ask how they've done, you know, like, maybe 11 orders of chicken, if it was a polo, the polo Frito truck, 11 to 15. And there wasn't, there wasn't a lot of demand. Now, if, if they, if they were, had served 500 people, I'm sure I would've had a second and third truck that would've loved to have come.
Yeah, that's about, that's supply and demand.
Yeah, right.
So, um, I, I just have one suggestion in regards to Thanksgiving. Instead of Wednesday, maybe just get some feedback, uh, maybe doing it on Tuesday. Because I know the schools are closed on Wednesday, and some of the families may wanna do some activities or something else with their, with their children. And it might be, you know... What would you call it? Uh, you'd have a higher attendance on Tuesday than Wednesday.
Yeah, 'cause sometimes Wednesday is a travel day.
Yeah, yeah.
Last thing they're thinking about is shopping, but...
Yeah.
I don't know. There's always that rush, and then you gotta always shop.
But if they're traveling, they're not gonna be cooking, so...
Well, yeah, that, that may not be true. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, it, it just, think about it. I'm, I'm okay with Wednesday, but I'm just thinking...
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to either day. I just, um, I believe that most people that are looking for a fresh pumpkin pie or something like that are gonna want it the day before rather than two days before. And so...
You know that this has started, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I, well, you, I've, I've been at, uh, now, College of San Mateo has quite, quite a, a very, very busy farmer's market on...
On Wednesdays.
On, on Wednesday and on Saturday.
That's San Mateo.
And I've, yeah, and I've seen...
That one is busy.
Yeah, and Crete, Crete Brioche is one of our, one of our vendors here, as, as well as Beckman's. And they do a tremendous business. You know, so, you know, if anybody is into, into, you know, their, their baked, um, their rolls and their French breads and, you know, the pumpkin pies and things like that, it would be something that people may be looking for.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry. Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll make some adjustments.
So, I guess the question to the city attorney, whether the adjustments we're asking for are sufficient and we need to bring it back, or is it possible to pass it tonight with the agreed-upon changes that we talked about?
I, I think you can pass it tonight if we summarize the changes, but I was unclear on what, if any, change we're making to section nine on the amplified sound. Was that left as is?
Well, it, it prohibits it.
Correct.
And we've been, actually, it's been happening.
Oh, okay, so we're simply deleting it?
Hmm, or I would say, you know, we could, we could specify more carefully, uh, you know, the, the low-level amplification for the musical accompaniment to the farmer's market, something, I don't know, something like that.
We could say no amplified sound shall be used except for low level. That does not, um... Disturb the neighborhood or extend beyond the boundary lines of, of property or something.
Right, that makes sense? 'Cause, I mean, uh, it, it hasn't been loud enough that you could even hear it a block away, so... It's not been a problem, I don't, I haven't heard anybody complain.
You had another one, too, Ray.
Were you also deleting the, uh, hours of operation?
That's right, it was that.
And the hours of operation.
Okay. Make it more flexible.
Okay, and then, uh, location, did we have, did we have anything in the...
Yeah, the question is, will you have to change anything? If, if we wanna move closer to the gazebo, maybe there'd need to be a little flexibility?
We were already modifying the map to some degree. I guess I would defer to Caroline and see if it covered the area that Jerry was talking about. 'Cause we were extending the boundaries.
Right.
I don't know if it goes to where he was talking about.
Probably not quite, yeah.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members.
Yeah.
Hi. So, according to the map that we've used to revise the tents, um, to be along Old County, I guess we can have a, maybe a winter time designated map for showing more tents around the gazebo area and one for non-winter ones.
That's true.
Yeah.
Have two maps in the agreement.
Yes.
Or just some flexibility.
Flexibility, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think it could be one map, just showing flexibility, you know?
Right, yeah.
And leave it up to you guys on how you set it up.
Yeah, perhaps we could have it where, um, you know, map or designated area to be determined by agreement between both parties and leave it more flexible?
Between the half and, uh, in there.
So that we don't have to say, oh, well, no tent here, but a tent there. And if it's not working, I'm sure Jerry's willing to work with it, and as long as we...
Yeah, that's kinda where we're at.
Clark, what's that?
She, I think there's six of them. She is incredible. She does such a great job of communication, and she is far ahead of me on, on everything that ever happens. And so, um, I, I speak with her every week before I come. And, um, you know, I, I could definitely bounce it off her, and she could check with Clay and, you know, make sure that, that, that anything that we, that we do, we, we give you notice before we do it. I'm not, I'm not gonna go out there and do anything crazy.
Yeah, I know, you, you had six months, that's six tasks.
We just wanna make sure that the agreement allows that to happen.
Right.
And so, as Clark said, to build in the, the flexibility, and needs to be probably the, you know, the point of contact should be the city manager, but we know who'll end up doing it.
Exactly.
Okay. Then I think we're set.
Great.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, Hal, do you comfortable with that? Okay, so I'd move approval as modified.
Second.
Do we need any... Do we, did we open this? Since we discussed...
I just ask if anyone else...
All right.
In the audience?
All right, all in favor?
No. Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, no one had given me a sl...
We didn't vote yet, did we?
No, I don't think you did.
We did, you voted?
I moved, but why don't you vote it?
I second.
Second.
I'm saying, yes.
Aye.
Again.
It's all right, Terry, you're probably still in France.
Um, he's...
Well, one time, I'm fine.
And I will say that in France, every little town has a market on a different day. So, there's always one within 10 miles. Everyone buys bread and fruits and vegetables and meat fresh every day. And it's a fabulous way to get to know an area and eat the best food. And that was probably the hardest part of coming back, is not having that abundance of beautiful, lovely, fresh food, um, just right outside your doorstep, no matter where you are.
Yeah.
Drinking wine.
Well, yeah, wine helped, too.
Come around.
Well, it's, it's a lovely culture, and it's nice to see a pedestrian traffic here and the fresh market here.
All right. All right, the next item is, um, public hearing. Item A, consider introduction ordinance number 566, amending chapter 16.12 tentative and final parcel maps and subdivision maps where required. Chapter 16.16 tentative map procedures. Chapter 16.20 final map procedures. Chap, chapter 16.24 park improvements. They access natural heating and cooling. Section 17.02.150 condominium. And chapter 17.30 condominiums of the municipal code. Staff, Clark?
Uh, yes, thank you, honorable mayor, members of the council. Um, the amendment is both to sub, um, title 16, which is the subdivision ordinance, and title 17, the zoning ordinance, uh, primarily pertaining to condominiums and the processing of condominiums. Uh, the, the series of them, the amendments, and there's a lot of language, as you saw in the attachment, that's actually being proposed for amendment, falls into a couple of basic categories. One is to, um, bring the, uh, ordinance into consistency with the subdivision map act, the State of California map act. Uh, there are a number of provisions that were, um, have been amended over time in the state provisions that had not been updated in our local ordinance. And some of the elements that are relevant to that pertain to the processing of, um, condominium maps for, um, in terms of the waiver of a final map. The, uh, procedures and the, uh, processes for the park fees and the Quimby Act fees, bringing them again up to date with, uh, the, the methodologies that the state requires us to use. And as well as to add provisions for tenant notification of condominium conversions as a part of the formal process. So, those are the primary areas where the ordinance is being amended to comply with state law. The number of other amendments that are related to achieving compliance with the city's housing element, which is intended, there's a policy related to, um, maintaining the affordable rental housing stock. And so, that pertains to, um, condominium conversions. That obviously hasn't been an issue here in a number of years, or in the Bay Area in general. Uh, but, um, it is important policy to implement. And what it does is ties findings for approval of conversions to, um, the identification of vacancy rates that are adequate to support the rental, uh, market and provide adequate, uh, movement. So, really, the provision, I think, requires a 5% vacancy rate being established within the city uh, to allow for condominium conversions. Uh, again, that would be a finding the planning commission would have to make. Um, the other series of housing element compliance, again, is, relates to quality of construction and the addition of development standards for condominium projects um, to add, um, amenities that are commensurate to what are required in other projects in other jurisdictions within San Mateo County. And so, this gets into things like, um, um, simplifying the, uh, requirements for recreational space, adding requirements for enclosed storage and laundry, for example. So, again, that the quality of, standard of living and quality of living for these kind of condo projects is commensurate to what you would find anywhere else. So, with that said, um, staff is recommending adoption or introduction of ordinance number 566 as presented. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
All right, um, questions from the council?
I wanna hear public.
I have a whole bunch, but, you know...
Go ahead.
I, I have a few, too. Uh, but it sounds like you, you'd rather hear from the...
I, I wanted to hear the public, because I'm sure some of our questions might be repeated by the public that is interested.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
It's okay.
Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I have some concerns about the proposed language changes that make me wonder if this was ever brought before the open space and ecology and the, um, parks and rec commissions, because, um, it's their purview to, you know, provide advice on zoning changes, um, for, you know, safety. And, um, this seems to have some sweeping change. Um, I find that notice limited to three sign boards in the city and/or the people within 300 feet of a proposed subdivision, because this includes both commercial, um, condominiums as well as residential common condominiums, is inadequate. Um, because there are organizations and communities, um, of interest who have in their missions to protect open space, to provide low-income housing stock, public trust, public access issues. And so, the, um, public notice is... public notice is totally inadequate, in my opinion. Um, I submitted something that specifies exactly which, you know, 1616-220F, I'm just gonna go over, um, over that language and just tell you, um, that, um, the document fails to recognize that public access and easements have been, um, created in the public trust, and there are certain provisions that need to, um, restrict alterations, and that, um, letting the planning commission be, um, find, define something as substantially equivalent really, um, is not an adequate process.
Page is that on?
1616-220F.
Representatives aren't, uh, 1616-2.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hard to follow all those things, um, anyway, I also think that you should recognize that adjacent, um, uses might cause serious public problems and not just the proposed site, uh, exposure to toxic and unsafe conditions should be an appropriate reason to deny a tentative map or proximity to, um, toxic and unsafe conditions. Um, the final map extensions, um, in my opinion, should have limits, it shouldn't just be something you agree with, with the developer, because there are often new laws that are regularly enacted to provide greater protections for health and safety, and if you just have a constant renewal of an old, um, um, map, um, it doesn't speak to the, um, being protective of public. Um, when we worked in the general plan to, um, to provide, uh, information for dedication for parks and recreational purposes, we used a national average that was really generous, and, um, what you're doing right here is giving an absolute minimum that, um, and also allowing somebody to escape, uh, providing recreation through in-lu fees, and I just find, I, I don't know if that's what the law says to do, but I find that to be pretty egregious, because there's no guarantee that that fee, unless you state that it needs to go into a public trust, there's no guarantee that that fee will go into a recreation, um, facility for these, um, com, uh, communities that, um, are to be created, and, um, um, oh, and that, and when you do place it in a trust, that any interest that is accumulated from that money should also serve the trust of the open space or the recreation need, it can't, you know, there's no definition here as to when you receive an in-lu fee, exactly where it goes, and how you guarantee, uh, there, it says it has to be dealt with in five years, but it also doesn't say what happens if you don't deal with it within five years, and so that's, uh, the, I'm sorry if I say this, but this is really another sloppy, um, provision, um, being presented to you. Um, the discussion of private open spaces of concern to me, because there's no requirement that the business or residents have access to that private open space, it could become a club or an exclusive membership only establishment, excluding the proposed low-income community you might use to get exactions, but then deny them access to. Um, to me, I, it seems that this would inflate the value, and that a developer would use this inflated value, uh, for, uh, credits, yet not provide the recreation facilities to the community for, that surrounds it, so I'm not understanding, um, the whole issue of private open space.
Where's that at, in the?
Uh, 162440, because, you know, some of us know about the Olympic Club and things like that, and that on occasion, they will open up their auditorium for, um, um, public forums, but in generally, in general, these, these would be considered, you know, private open space uses that really, um, won't serve the community that you're calculating, um, this open space to serve. Um, I don't believe that exemptions should be allowed for commercial and industrial subdivisions, and if you think of the Sierra Point, which was originally required recreation for workers, so, and required access to the bay for workers, because they too need to be able to, um, have a different sense than just being at a job, no offense to just being at a job, but, for example, the, um, the open space that's behind the Costco in South San Francisco has natural paths, and it's a godsend to the, um, cement environment, which would otherwise be the big box retail and the sewer plant there, you know, if you ever go behind Costco and you can see the, um, egrets waiting in the slough there, you go, oh, I'm glad somebody required this, and so I'm concerned that, that you, you will exempt people from seizing opportunities like that. Um, later on, you fail to recognize that BCDC has jurisdiction over the shoreline, where you state that, um, the planning commission will decide, um, whether there's adequate access to the shore, and it should also include legal road access, um, not just highway access, and it should include public parking, and I find, um, it really unnerving to go out to Sierra Point, although there are no businesses there now, but to see the sign that says shore access, um, not during business hours, I don't understand who allowed that, and I'm fairly certain BCDC didn't approve that. Um, one of your provisions fails to mention air quality standards, um, because, because of the air conditioning systems that would be allowed, um, I questioned a little later on when you're talking about the square footage or the, um, uh, storage space, 125 cubic feet, not square feet, is very tiny space, it's about the size of a refrigerator, and, um, I feel that for businesses that store chemicals, might refrigerate goods, stock materials, that stating this as a minimum for storage is inadequate. Um, sometimes it's not clear if, you know, if it's the storage for residential, it should state residential, but because you have the language for condominium to be for both, um, residential and commercial, I find that the language doesn't always work for both, uh, businesses or both services.
Where's that one?
Um, 173030B3, the minimum square footage, has 125 cubic feet.
125 cubic feet.
I go, that's, well, 10 by 12 times one foot high, um, anyway, I know it can be figured in, in different ways. Um, I'm concerned about, um, the developer expressing that there are adequate alternatives off-site of the area that, um, is being proposed, because you don't ever necessarily have control over the open space that somebody else is in possession of, um, you just can't guarantee it, you can't guarantee that it'll be available in the future. Um, in the part where you're listing all the things that, um, and, um, a condominium conversion should include, you've kind of missed some of the environmental things, and this is why I questioned whether this had gone before the environmental, or the open space and ecology committee, because it should include your rainwater retention, your native plant use, your conservation measures regarding waste, energy use, or other import, uh, important environmental considerations, including, um, what, um, you have, uh, dealing with sea level rise, if the sea rises and somebody's got a bottom floor apartment, I think about Venice, Italy, um, those people had to vacate those bottom floors, um, but you're not requiring anything, uh, or any kind of understanding that these are potential, um, issues in the future. Um, one of the list of things doesn't include carbon monoxide detectors, and because I've recently had my house refinanced, I know that that's a new state law, um, also doesn't ask for confirmation of the information that somebody else provides to be, um, confirmed by the, a city inspector, and, um, I also think you should require that, um, conversions like that, um, review for, uh, for toxic molds, we have two businesses out on the Baylands, the, um, fire station and the Unicow building, which are uninhabitable because of toxic mold, and to not believe that this could be a problem in the future, um, I think is pretty remiss in this document, so, um, I have great, more detail in terms of the, um, actual, you know, 161620F that I supplied to, um, Sherry, and really ask you to look at this very carefully, because this, I don't know, seems lacking, in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. All right, John, you want to tackle some of those items?
Um, sure, we can go, I, I'll need your help probably in catching all the, the comments or the points, um, a couple that jump out at me, one is the carbon monoxide, that could certainly added to smoke, and carbon monoxide detectors on, um, what is that, 17?
42.
Yeah.
Point 10.
Yep.
Item two.
P.
QR.
Yeah, we just added as P, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, um, there's a whole list of other, you know, concerns that were raised that were environmental and nature, certainly nothing in the, in the procedure for subdivisions, subdivisions are subject to SEQA review as well, so any projects that are going through a subdivision, a condominium project that requires a SEQA review, those kind of site-specific, unique environmental conditions are going to be addressed on a case-by-case basis, conditions, mitigation measures can be imposed as needed on a case-by-case basis, the idea of requiring something in all cases when it may not apply, you know, again, that's maybe a policy question for the council, but certainly the vehicle by case-by-case review of SEQA allows for those kind of environmental issues to be addressed. There's concern about the, the standards for, uh, storage or those other standards and how applicable they were to non-residential, and they're not intended to apply to non-residential, because it's, I'll just read, "The following development regulations shall apply to newly constructed residential condominiums and residential condominium conversions, including residential units and mixed-use developments," it doesn't apply to non-residential, and that's 17030B, so that's kind of addressed there.
So we're kind of clear on, um, 125 cubic feet, that's a little more than a four-by-four by eight-foot high.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and again, right now, there's no requirement or standard for any storage for a, um, condominium, so the idea of providing something that's, you know, whether it's to be more or less, again, this was a number that was recommended and recommended by the planning commission, so.
Okay.
Um, again, there's some comments about inadequacy or BCDC issues not being addressed under 16240070, um, the language that's in here is consistent with the state map act, it's the same language, again, nothing in the, nothing in this would preclude somebody from complying with whatever, whatever other regulations apply, so BCDC regulations would apply in addition to these standards, right, if, if they apply to a project, the subdivision ordinance doesn't give somebody a free pass to ignore other regulations, so, again, that's a whole separate issue, uh, and so if you'd be adding something, you'd be inconsistent with state law. Um, again, the, the issue of whether or not you could get credit for private recreational facilities, again, the language, which is consistent with the state, um, so you talk about land fees or combin, this is in 16.24.010, "Land fees or combination thereof are to be used only for the purposes of developing new or rehabilitating existing neighborhood or community park or recreational facilities to serve the subdivision," you can ask for the city attorney's opinion, I would interpret that to be a public use, basically, uh, so the idea that somehow that becomes a private use where the intended beneficiaries are somehow shut out from enjoying those facilities, I think is precluded in this language, um, the conditions of approval for any project could certainly be defined and make that very clear as well, again, on a specific project, if there's a specific concern, there's the ability via the conditions to address that. And I'm sorry if I missed some other, oh, the notification, again, there's no changes being proposed to our current notification procedures, which are consistent with state law, um, again, if the council has a different opinion about that, that's obviously your, at your discretion, but these are consistent with state law and consistent with city practice. And with that, uh, if I missed any, I apologize, and I'd be glad to address any other issues that were raised.
All right, you know, one of the things that, that was brought up was the in-lu fees and, you know, like, where do they go, and, and you have some examples, and so I didn't, you know, I'm putting you on the spot, but where would you use those in-lu fees to do something?
Typically, the, the issue with the in-lu fee is if there's going to be a, a larger community facility built that would benefit more than this particular project, they would contribute a fee for that facility, and then when that, that would go toward the, the construction of the facility that goes beyond sort of their, their cost obligation. Um, and I'd have to defer to Hal in terms of if the fees, Quimbi Act fees are collected and not utilized within the specified time, I don't kind of know what the, that procedure is, I'd have to ask Hal.
I think my recollection is that, you know, they would be entitled to be refunded to the developer, the developer's success earned interest, um, but the only thing I would add to that is under the state law, you can make a finding that if you're not ready to spend it, you can extend the time, so maybe we want to put some language to that effect in here, but, um, it'd be very rare that the fees are actually returned, they're usually collected with reference to a particular project the city has in mind, either a project within the subdivision itself, or some larger community project, and I have had situations where a larger project is not ready to go and you're accumulating the funds to finance it, and you may need to extend the time, uh, as long as you're still moving forward toward that objective.
All right, so, and as long as you've been the city attorney, we've never given back any?
Yeah, ultimately, if you did nothing to it, the developer could make a claim to a refund, but I think any city properly managing their, the budget in the fees is always going to find some intended use for it.
It was brought up, so I was, right, put that after, all right.
I have a, a suggestion, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, 'cause obviously Dana had a lot of stuff, and, and I couldn't.
I know, I'm trying to, right.
I couldn't catch it, and, and I don't think we caught it all, my suggestion is, is that we get public testimony, and then we get council concerns, and I would like actually to get some written responses to Dana's concerns, 'cause obviously she spent a lot of time on that, and then, um, come back at a subsequent meeting, and then go forward from there.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion.
I agree with that.
Because this is introducing the ordinance anyway, so.
Yes. All right, so Ray, you had some?
Um, I'm still in the public hearing.
Okay, well, anybody else, 'cause there weren't any other slides.
Oh, Jamie.
Jamie.
Thank you for recognizing the magnitude of the work that's been done to present this to you, and to realize that this is a very big thing, and, and to thank you to all of you for agreeing to that, and not just letting it slip out the door quickly, there's an awful lot of detail in this. There's an awful lot of detail in this that is going to have to be addressed. And I really appreciate the councils taking this so seriously that it isn't, it isn't pushed when it's not ready to go. Two things. One, I never drive by the fire department, but I don't say, "We built that. Our town built that. And if we can build that and do it so poorly, we can do other things poorly, we've got to be careful." Keep that in mind because I think our firemen can't even sleep in our town unless they're in mobile units. And that, that's a big problem. So we have to be careful with everything we do. Thank you to Dana Delworth for doing all that homework. That certainly was helpful to everybody. Now with reference especially to the park and recreation information. When a developer has in-lu fees, it's my belief that these in-lu fees will never amount, never reach the amount needed to give an adequate amount of recreation or open space for that development or to contribute to the community. This is such a money-minded economy. We're so willing to take money for things because we're also poor. Cities are poor, people are poor. And somebody says, "Well, we'll, we'll give you this much money." And when we look at it carefully, it's never going to amount to what we really need. And if we look at our parks and we look at the things that we still want to do in terms of recreation for this community, we're going to need good additional recreation opportunities. And if we have a developer that's going to put money into a development here, he's going to make money, of course he's going to make money, she's going to make money. And if that's the case, then we want that development to add to this community, not just take from this community. And that's going to mean in park and recreation, as far as I'm concerned. If we take a look at the facilities that we do have, many of them came with development thanks to past staff and councils who made sure that these things happened. And I want to be certain that we aren't quick to accept money, which may never reach the amount that we need to do a good development of a recreational opportunity, one that we don't presently have or one that we need to upgrade. For example, saying that, oh, there are recreation opportunities down the road, for example, if we were talking about the Baylands. You know, we're going to develop this, but the city has recreational opportunities, but they will never really be able to accommodate any large group of people. And with condominium developments, my experience, and it's my experience as being president of a homeowners association, the recreation opportunities that are done by the developer, you have to really ride that horse well because it's going to be the smallest amount they can possibly do. And the amount of money they're going to do, give you is going to be the same. So you really have to be careful about the recreation opportunities brought by a condominium development. While you have the developer still on site, that's when you can hold his feet to the fire. Once he's gone, he's gone. He can go bankrupt, you can be stuck, whatever. So you really have to hold his feet to the fire. Get it, get in mind what you want in terms of recreation and open space, know what it is, have it well-defined, and go for it from day one. Don't just take money because it'll never be enough. And the fire department, we built it. We built it so we can make mistakes. And we have to be very careful. And I'm so appreciative of tonight's meeting, the council, the work that Dana did and the way the council accepted and appreciated the work. And it's going to look so carefully at every single thing so that it is done well. That's, what more could we ask of you? So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Anybody else out in the audience like to speak about ordinance number 566?
I'd recommend that we keep the public hearing open until the next meeting. Is that the correct thing to do, Hal?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Ray, questions?
Yeah, I have a series of questions. Actually, some of which Dana brought up as well, so they overlap. And I really agree with what Clark said. So I have a couple of questions that just, they pop up in the change language, but they're also in the staff report. So I'll start with the ones so easier to follow, I guess. On page two, when we're talking about exceptions for, you know, contributions to the recreation, a condominium project to be dedicated to be affordable to households with very low, low or moderate incomes. And my question there has to do with the level that's considered moderate and whether that really is an appropriate exception. Because what we're doing is cutting people, cutting developers out so far as their obligations are concerned, as I understand it. And yet, as I also understand it, moderate income can go pretty high. And so do we, I can be comfortable with maybe low, moderate, or something like that. But I just wanted that issue to be investigated again as to whether that's, maybe that's too high an income level for an exemption, exception or whatever. So that's a question. I don't really know for sure, but it's a question.
Ray, may I follow up? Because sometimes you're talking about that could be very high.
Right.
We don't know about the debt ratio, though. I mean, sometimes, you know, people might be making so many, but their debt is a little bit high.
Well, but this doesn't go to individuals, it goes to the developer. Yeah. Right?
Well, the low moderate is based on the tenancy. The incomes of the people who will live there. So if it's income restricted, but you can sort of look in so you get an idea of what that number is based on the current statistics.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay. The other, also, just in the third page of the staff report, when we're talking about if you're going to allow a conversion, and you're talking about impact on the rental market, and you use the figure or the indicator for not reducing the vacancy rate less than 5%, that strikes me as pretty low. I mean, generally, 5% is kind of what you would expect just from people, you know, moving in and out, that that's kind of a, just a transitional percentage of, of space that would be vacant. And if we, we're talking about something that's really going to influence the market, it seemed to me it should be higher than that.
If I could respond in terms of where that 5% came from, that was based on, when we go through the RENA process, that's basically what the, when they determine our regional housing needs allocation, is assuming that minimum 5%. And so we use it because it's kind of a regionally recognized sort of target for minimal vacancy. But again, if the council wants to do something higher, that's your discretion, but that's where it came from originally.
Doesn't it strike you as, you know, 5% is really just, you know, that you would have just people moving in and out and really, it's not going to affect market rates at that low percentage? I'm sort of surprised that that's the rate that's being used.
We can, we can put this on the list, and I could come up with some other options. We'll look what other jurisdictions do if you wish. Obviously, the intent is not to completely eliminate that ability, but the idea of not pushing out, that there's some flexibility for anybody who might need to relocate on the basis of a conversion to have housing eligibility or availability in town.
Can I follow up while we're on that track? What is our current approximate vacancy rate now in Brisbane? Just to get a feel of that.
As I understood, and this is, I'll again get the precise number, is slightly less than 5%. The last time, this, this came up when the planning commission reviewed this, which was last November, so my recollection could be a little hazy. But basically, as of the condition last November, you couldn't have done a conversion, not that anybody's interested right now, but you couldn't have done a conversion and met that threshold. So we were under that vacancy rate.
And what I'd, I'd like to see is if, how that's fluctuated over the last few years with the economy change and shifts. It seems that rental housing is very tight at the moment, so it'd be nice to see a variety of numbers on that.
I think it's been tight for a long time, even the slob in Brisbane.
So, thank you.
Yeah, well, since the collapse of the housing market. Okay, another question also on page three, the next paragraph. You mentioned that the planning commission was questioning the franchise agreement with the scavenger company and about the shared garbage receptacles. But there's no conversation about that further. And so I guess I wanted to know, what were they asking about? What were they concerned about? And did anything come out of it?
I guess the concern was originally, the observation being, and I probably defer to people who are more familiar with the actual franchise agreement with scavenger. But the concern was that, at least the premise was, that if you had a single-family residence and had your separate cans, you had a lower rate than you paid if you lived in a condo and you had, I guess, a commercial rate of pickup. I don't know if that's true or not, but that was the contention that was raised. So from a land use standpoint, it came out, well, should we allow every condo project to have enough storage for the number of cans so they could have individual pickup? You know, whether or not you'd logistically be able to do that, I think when you start getting over 10 units and you think of 20 cans or some number of cans, that really starts to impact your ability to, to plan a site and develop a site. So it became more of an issue from a land use issue to more of a, what was perceived as an equity issue in terms of rate, structure, and that's kind of what it left, that is more of a, an issue beyond the realm of the planning commission. And that's kind of how they left it, was just sort of a, an issue that was kind of thrown out there to see if the council would respond and have an interest. And if it's going to be pursued, it's again, not through this zoning ordinance, it's through a separate vehicle.
Okay, but it's just one of those things that since it's been raised, it's an important issue, it's an equity issue, then we should, you know, make sure it doesn't get lost.
We can crunch those numbers, actually. You know, with what, what our bins are. I think Maria could probably put, put together something on what, what it is. And certainly, it's much more efficient by bend than it would be, I mean, for the garbage company and, and for the, the folks. They'd only have one place to go. Otherwise, if, they'd be using their four-by-four storage to put their garbage cans and recycle bins.
Right. So now I have a question on 16, doesn't seem to be any page number, so we'll have to go with the designations of the ordinance. It's 1620, 16.24.040?
1624.
It's called dedication.
Yes.
The one that was rewritten.
Yeah, very extensively rewritten, yeah. Lot of red. And on B, which is on the, the next page, it says, "If a condominium project, community apartment project, stock cooperative or planned development provides private open space within the development which is usable for active recreational uses, the value of such land shall be a credit against the payment of fees or dedication of land required by this chapter." Now, my question there is, generally speaking, we're talking about recreation facilities available to the public. And now we're saying if they provide something for private use, then they can deduct from what they have to do for the public, as I understand this. And I guess my question is, you know, does it make any sense for us to say, "Okay, if you're going to do this sort of thing, then, and it comes under this chapter, maybe there ought to be access to the public?" I mean, what I'm thinking in, like, there's this playground on Mission Blue in Viewpoint, wonderful playground. And there's a big sign there for residents only, you know. And then I was told, "Well, they really can't do that." You know, it was really because, you know, they did it as a part of the public process, it really is open to the public. But that's not what the sign says. So I'm wondering exactly what this means, and so that you can see what my concern is.
Yeah, I think basically you're correct, the original. And if you read what the stricken-out section right below that of A, is really no different than it was previously. But there was, if you were going to provide a private amenity to serve your residents, the assumption would be that that would reduce the demand on public facilities elsewhere that would be being paid for by those dollars. So by relieving that through an onsite facility, you know, you would be relieved of that burden. And that's how I read A before, and that's how I read B now. The difference really being that the, there's a level of prescriptiveness with these one through, one A through and B that were somewhat onerous, and then again, in the practical experience of the senior planner who's worked on a lot of these projects, and he actually recommended the deletion of those particular provisions. But the fundamental language hasn't changed from, from what it was. But again, that's the council's choice, but that was the intent.
So you see my concern now? I don't know whether others share my concern that?
Well, the, the community is, is allowing or, or in having these developments go in, and it, I think it depends on if you're looking for the open space to be a benefit to just the development or for the greater community, on how you want to word that. And so it, and it may be a legal question of liability of having the public come onto their spaces or encroach on their parking, or, you know, there's a lot of other issues that go into that that makes it, well, is this an amenity for bringing the price up and having a more livable and a more desirable place for the, just the residents or for the broader community? And I think we need to sort of look at that on, on how they interact, whether there should be, you know, say, private space and then peripheral public space, recreation and a differential on that, and figure out how we can perhaps word that so there is the, the core possibly private space and the peripheral public benefit.
Yeah, because, I mean, it doesn't put any limitation on it. I mean, presumably, they could make it all private open space in terms of their obligation. It's possible, right, under the way it's written? Yeah. And that kind of makes me nervous.
Well, I think there are two issues at play here. One is the use, and the other is the ownership and maintenance.
Right.
And the original language says privately owned and maintained.
Right.
I think one of the main purposes of the, of the word private was to indicate that it would not become a public responsibility in terms of maintenance of the park. I don't think it necessarily prohibits public use, but it is an issue that I think probably merits some further discussion and clarification.
Clarification.
Maybe that's something we could footnote on exactly what that means, you know. You know, and I think that would take care of the concern, Ray, because, I mean, it's a, it's a good point, you know, what Hal brings up about the maintenance of it.
Of course.
Yeah.
No, these are all questions. I don't, I don't have a.
Yeah, but you know, it's not, it's not clear right here.
Yeah, exactly.
You're right about that, and you bring up a good point. If the developer wanted to have all the land or all the open space be in, within the development, it seems like they have the option to do that. But then it's not clear that the public could then access that amenity.
Excuse me, sir.
You know, we're going to, I'll, I'll bring you back in later after the questions from the council.
This is, my, my next point actually was one of Dana's. And that goes to the next page, 1620, 16.24.060, under exemptions. And it says, "Commercial or industrial subdivisions are exempt." Exempt exactly from what and why?
Yeah, really.
Talking about. Talking about item C?
That's relating back to the park fees?
That was one of my questions, too.
So the intent is that, again, that a parcel map, less than five parcels, would not be subject to the dedication.
Yeah, well, that's A. I'm talking about C.
Everything after the header has been stricken.
Right.
Yeah, that would basically means that whether it be a parcel map, but all industrial, in industrial subdivisions are done by parcel map. So it changes, basically, I guess that eliminates the 300 square foot requirement. I'm gonna double, I'd have to double-check and see if this is actually a MAP Act requirement, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, it's.
It strikes me as pretty comprehensive, and do we really want to do that? If I'm reading it right, but that's, again, it's a question.
It's cross-referencing back to twenty-four oh one oh through twenty-four oh five oh, which is exclusively the subject of dedication of parkland or income fees. So I think, you know, the message of that section is if you have a commercial development, you don't need to deal with parks that are oriented toward residential occupancies.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, so, why is that the case? That becomes a policy question.
It may have its origin in the state MAP Act.
It could be, yeah. That would be an answer, yeah, right. It's a question.
Yeah.
Can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
Is a condominium project considered commercial?
Oh, yeah.
I think we have one in Crocker Park, in fact. The space is, it's commercial space, but it's individually owned as a condominium.
I just had a question on, this is in seventeen point thirty point oh three oh, development Over here, all the, looks like B four, this is all in red.
I'm sorry, which?
It's seventeen point thirty point oh three oh.
Oh three oh, sorry, I went one page too far.
It's called development standards, and then go over to the next page, all the red stuff there, and then number four under B, we're talking about outdoor areas, and says, "Such areas may be for use in common or dedicated to private use." And again, I want to know, kind of, what does that mean? What's the difference? And why does it not make any difference whether it's one or the other?
Well, the intent, again, would be to allow someone to get credit for a private deck that's private space, is not common to the project overall, but the idea that that is still a private recreational amenity that should get credited.
So it's the same issue, really, that we raised before?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
It's even on micro scale, we're guys literally talking about someone's private deck.
Right, right. Okay, got it. On the next page, this is just, I guess I need help from the city attorney. In the middle there, six E, provision specifying that the city of Brisbane is named as a third-party beneficiary for enforcement purposes. What does that mean?
Well, we do that all the time.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not sure what it means.
Condominiums are almost always accompanied by the recording of covenants, conditions, and restrictions. For example, the Northeast Ridge was not a condominium, but there are CCNRs.
Right.
There are various provisions that are typically identified as being city-imposed conditions, and the enforcement then would be also, the city would have authority to enforce those conditions. That doesn't mean that we take over the whole operation of the owners' association, but there may be specific restrictions or requirements, for example, to maintain landscaping, restrictions on certain building aspects. And all that means is that there may be some provisions of that kind, that we would want the documents to specifically allocate to the city an authority to enforce those provisions, even though they are part of a private document governing a private development. So we become a third-party beneficiary, and we can bring legal action if necessary to enforce those provisions.
Okay, now, the reason I'm trying to think my way through this is, I remember the issue up on the ridge with the fence that was built.
Actually, that's the one I was thinking of.
Yeah, right. How, does this help us with that?
If we had that language, and I think we did in the ridge, and we were relying on that language to say that, yeah, it would allow the city, if the homeowners' association failed to take action, to actually bring a legal action to abate that condition. I think we also amended the general enforcement language of the municipal code when we made those, the wholesale revision for administrative enforcement, to include as a violation a condition that was imposed as part of a development that was violated. So I think under the current language that we've now adopted in the municipal code, we could actually issue citations for violation of CCNRs where the city had a specific enforcement right. So there are any number of contexts in which that could be applied, but actually, I was thinking of the fence, too.
Yeah, same case.
Same case, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we're in better shape then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Continuing this same section, that was, if you go on to the next page, there's, when you have an application for a use permit, this is a conversion, there's a whole lot of information that's being requested. And one of the things that we've been talking about in other contexts is something which I don't see listed here, and maybe I'm just missing it, but one of the things that, it's under C, where it says, "The date and description of each major repair, renovation of any element since the date of construction." But there's a special category that we've had to deal with, and that is problems of, you know, contractor underperformance, which led to litigation, which then led to all kinds of additional expensive improvements, I mean, repairs, which the lawsuit wasn't sufficient to cover everything, and so there had to be assessments and.
You're thinking of the Northeast Ridge.
There's a whole lot of stuff up there on the Northeast Ridge, especially, I mean, it was both Altamar and Viewpoint, but Viewpoint has especially been affected, and that seems to be a very important part of the history that ought to be here, at least based on the experience we've had, and it's not clear that that's there. That's, I guess my question is, you know, it might be covered by C, but then not necessarily. See my question? Because it seemed to me that's the kind of thing that ought to be a part of the history that people ought to know about, if we're going to get all this information.
Perhaps that concern could be addressed by simply adding in in C, where it says, "The date and description of each major repair, comma, renovation, or correction of defects." Because that's kind of the situation we had at the ridge.
Right, right, exactly. But then you have the, you know, the whole question, as you know, so who's responsible for paying for fixing it?
Well, but that's new construction. Here, we're dealing with conversion of an.
Yeah, 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 I know, but this is the history, right? This is the, you want to know what the history was, and that's certainly a part of, if anybody buys up in the ridge, it's going to want to know that, and it's going to be a part of the disclosure and everything.
Should be part of the disclosure.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, right. And believe it or not, I have just one more, and I'm finished, I'm sorry. This is under seventeen point thirty point oh seven oh. Action by the planning commission? With me?
Mandatory conditions.
Yeah, mandatory conditions, and then B, this is conversions again. Any hazardous untake identified through the inspection shall be corrected prior to the first sale of any of the converted units. And I guess my question is, why are we using first sale as the enforcement point rather
I'll have to look into that. I'm not sure if that's, again, an external requirement or not.
Okay.
Should it, are you saying that you'd rather anticipate it being the first occupancy of any of the converted units? Instead of the first sale of any of the converted units?
Because the occupancy takes place afterwards.
Yeah, I would rather see that the person who's buying the place has some protection.
Right, but don't you, yeah, that's the point. You need, the occupancy permit comes before, you know, the sale.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, yeah, but that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the sequence is here.
You could have first sale or certificate of occupancy, whichever occurs first. You could, very often condominiums are pre-sold while construction or renovation is still going on, so.
But this is the conversion.
That's why it's first sale?
That'd be my guess.
But this is under the conversion section.
Right.
I know, but you would still need a permit. What I don't know, and we'll have to check on that, because if it's a conversion, there's already been a certificate of occupancy for the building.
Okay.
As a rental.
Okay.
So what I don't know is, when there is a conversion, and we'd have to check with the building folks on this, is would there be another certificate of occupancy as an individual unit?
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that.
Right, okay. Neither do I, that's why I'm asking the question.
Good point.
If it's a person who's occupying it and has the opportunity to buy it, then.
Right. Just want to make sure that, I mean, first sale is a little more difficult for the city to control, it seemed to me, if there were another decision point that was earlier, where we actually have to give a permit, you know, before they can do anything. First sale is not really under our control so much, so that's kind of why I was raising the issue.
That's right, because it could be given to, you know, a sibling, I mean, yeah, sibling or, you know, son or daughter, and there's no sale.
Well, that kind of, that kind of brings up the question of, do we have anything, like, if a person wanted to do it, you know, exactly how the mechanics of that would be?
Right.
Because if a person says, well, I want to convert these over to condominiums, and I got six units, and five out of the six people want first right of refusal, and therefore, you know, what the process would be, because they wouldn't want to move out and then have to move in.
Right.
Because really, there's, it's just a mechanical thing or a paper trail that's happening for that, and I think that's what happened on Joy Avenue, was something similar, on how exactly that would go down, as far as what type inspections would take place. Maybe that's really what you're looking for, is how that would all mechanically work, and I don't think that we necessarily addressed that in this.
I think we need to clarify the provision. I mean, even the word sale could be ambiguous. I don't know if it means when you've executed a binding contract, or whether you've closed escrow.
Right.
Maybe as an alternative, we should say prior to the first transfer of ownership, because whether it's a sale, a gift, or whatever, there still has to be a deed to the unit to whoever the transferee is.
Right.
And that, at least, you can define in terms of time, whereas the sale, I, you know, I'm taking that to mean you've closed the escrow.
Right.
And if you've closed the escrow, then you've recorded a deed, so.
Yeah.
You'd record a deed whether you're buying it or giving it away.
Right. And this is pretty important, because we're dealing with hazardous and unsafe conditions, so, yeah. So want to make sure that we, you know, get it at the pass rather than.
Yeah, prior to somebody making a commitment to.
Yeah, exactly.
To want the space.
Okay, those are all the questions I had, and I appreciate all the answers and everybody's patience.
Right. And I would not repeat some of the stuff that I had, that you had on yours. One of the items that I had really had to do with item seventeen point three oh zero three zero, but the following page, item B two, I'm sorry, item three, that has to do with having the independent water, sewer, electrical, gas system, and, you know, telecommunications system for each unit, which I think that's the way it should go, but there's an exception unless the applicant or the planning commission can approve satisfactorily demonstration that there's adequate services available. Why are we getting off of it? Why aren't we allowing people to have independent water, sewer?
I think, again, like in most things that are planning-related, you can't regulate every possible circumstance. There may be a situation where a shared use system does make sense for whatever reason, and the idea of not providing that particular project the opportunity to make their case to the planning commission to demonstrate that is really, you know, the intent is to provide a little flexibility for that unanticipated case.
Well, the same item, you go down to B two, talks about having individual washer and dryer in the home, but they, unless they can have one washer and dryer in the common laundry room, for a common laundry area for every five units, you know how uncomfortable that That must be really difficult for residents, for us to do something for the convenient of the developer versus the convenient of the tenants or occupants. I think this is really something that could be looked at, but I really look at the convenient of the tenant.
You know, if I, if I, yeah, I mean, John, can you respond to that? Because it does seem like, yeah, you have five units, and there could be ten people, and they're all sure.
One washer.
It's like quite a bit of a, you know, quite an extensive use on just those two appliances.
Well, again, there's certainly a standard that the council can modify. I mean, we did a survey of the standards for other jurisdictions in the county, and that's a fairly standard requirement, so that's what we kind of went forward with. Again, if you want to be more stringent or more, you know, it's certainly your call at the end of the day on this.
The thing is, if they don't have it over there, they're going to use the one that we have down in the, on visitation. Why do that to people? One washer and dryer in the home for every five units?
Do you have any other jurisdictions that have a higher ratio?
Well, we can certainly come back with that if you want to get through this item, so you can move your agenda along. I'd be glad to come back with that information.
Yeah, for sure, for the next one.
The rest of the items, really, here and there, in different pages, just reminded me of, again, I'm going to be protecting the tenant versus really being concerned about the developer or the applicant or whatever. The difficulty is that people who bought or rented the facilities in Northeast Ridge was really poor workmanship, and what happened to people with the paint, with the gutter, with all of that. How are we protecting over here in this document? I really didn't see anything that would really protect the tenants.
Again, the primary driver on this was to get into condominium conversions, really to regulate those, to put some restrictions in a way that lower, moderate-income existing rental units wouldn't be impacted unless there was further supply available, in terms of sort of the issue of construction defect and what happens in a situation where. In terms of sort of the issue of construction defect and what happens in a situation when you're remedial condition, I don't know that the zoning ordinance is really the best place to try to foresee that kind of situation, and unless Hal has some suggestions as to, you know, ordinance language, I'm not sure how you, how you both foresee that and what exactly remedies you would apply in an ordinance that applies project, you know, to all projects in the city, when you, again, you're stuck with a unique set of circumstances based on a particular project.
I agree. I mean, somebody had, just a few minutes ago, we heard that anytime they look at the firehouse, they really remember, they think of how poorly that was built. And again, anytime I look up there, I look at all the struggle that people have been going through and the big assessments that they have to go through. Some of them even lost their homes because of all of this situation. So I'm really trying to find a way that we can, maybe it's not the ordinance, maybe it's the inspection, but how do you really lock that? I think something we need to think about. So the very last one is 17.30070, and it had to do with item A about the required off-street parking. Talks about that the required off-street parking spaces excluding any guest parking cannot be sold or exchanged or transferred. Why not guests parking? Does this mean that guest parking can be?
Typically, guest parking is in a common area that would be owned by the association.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, you have any questions?
I want to thank everybody for doing their homework so well, and I did want to comment on Jamie's comment about being, asking for it upfront instead of trying to get it afterwards as far as recreation areas, and I think that's a really good idea. It's sort of like with our swimming pool, the development at the Northeast Ridge financed, but it's not giving us the money to run it. And so I think it's, it's very appropriate to look at the big picture and the long-term financial impacts of the recreation that's provided for these. And so I think the comments that the staff has responded to and the public's brought up are all really good things that we need to look at, and I appreciate the hard work that everyone else put into it, and apologize for my lack of it.
It's okay, you're on vacation today.
I was.
And kudos for the planning commission for going through this, if they even remember when they did this.
Say, almost a year ago?
All right, so this will come back before the council. Okay, so when do you anticipate?
Let me speak for staff. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that came up tonight, so your next meeting is three weeks, maybe, maybe not, but certainly probably within the next, next month.
Sometime this year.
Sometime this year.
We still have more public that wanted to make a comment?
Yes, we do. Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Richardson, thank you for looking carefully at this and saying that you're working for the tenants or for the owners. It's egregious to think that a development would have one washer and dryer. Anything that's written like that, we know immediately is for the benefit of the developer and not for the people who are going to live there. When you own a condominium, you only own from the paint on your walls in. You don't own the wall, you don't own the plumbing in the walls, you don't own the electrical systems, you don't own anything. You get a twelfth of the building, if there are 12 units in that building, or a fifth of the building, it's on your, it's on your contract. But the CCNRs, they're written in such a way to protect the association, and you pay a fee to belong to that association because you own that condominium. And part of that is, when you get your deed, part of it will say that you also own part of the common space, which would be the recreation area. So if a development wanted to say that they were not going to have outsiders, people who didn't belong there, on their recreational space because of, let's say, insurance purposes or worry about lawsuits or something, they could very well do that. They could do that as an association. We'd have to really be careful beforehand to make sure that we protect, and for example, thinking that someone's private deck to their home could be a substitute for a recreation space or facility is egregious. When you buy your home, you have a deck attached to it, it's part of what you buy that is part of your condominium, so that, that's kaput. But in terms of the use of the recreational facilities within the development, they're under the auspices of the Board of Directors of the Homeowners Association, and I don't know how the city will make, make that any different. And probably the city can, and there will be a way, but would have to be done beforehand, not after the fact. I'm thinking of, you know, we can have condo conversions from, anywhere from two to four to 10 to 400, depending on what ends up being converted. And that's why we have to be really careful about the recreational facilities and all of these things, like Councilman Richardson picked out this one, point for every five units, one washer and dryer. Well, that's ridiculous, and we all know it. So I'm so happy to see that we're looking very carefully. We have learned really serious lessons with what happened at the ridge and the problems that people are having. Yes, people have lost their homes because they've been giving assessments to their homeowners' fees to pay for things. For example, if you live in one building and a small plane hits another building two blocks down the road, and it's part of your development, you're going to get assessed for that. That sounds like an impossibility, but if something goes wrong with one of those buildings, then you're all assessed to make sure that's paid for. So whether or not we're talking about small units of two or four or five, six, whatever, it looks like the rules are going to go right across the board for all of them, and that's what we have to be very careful about. And I'm particularly interested in the recreation and park facilities, because I know that we're working on them all the time and trying to make sure this community maintains those opportunities for people, because as we've often said, and I make it a real point, that the opposite of play is depression, not the opposite of play is work. So we really need this, and we need to make sure we do a good job on it. So thank you all for looking at this so carefully. It was quite well done, and I think it'll be really going to make a big difference on how this turns out in the end, and also for watching out for the people who, Brisbane, not watching out for the developers. Their interests are in money, they will get their money, but we're going to be feeling sorry for our neighbors like we do for people that live up on the ridge if, in fact, they get stuck with some of these things in the end. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I suggest the council continue this to a date certain so we don't have to re-notice the public hearing, even if it's three weeks down the road? If we're not ready, we can always continue again, but this was a notice public hearing, and you're keeping the hearing open, so.
Okay.
We can continue it to whatever that next meeting is, three weeks down the road or later, as long as it's a certain date.
Okay, motion to extend the meeting to November 5th?
Yeah, that's the, that's the only meeting we have in November.
Do November 5th, and then we'll continue it.
I'm sorry. Motion to extend this item, not the meeting.
Second.
Okay, now we got it right. I'll send it.
Okay, good. All right.
We're breaking records all over.
All right, we have item number eight, which is whole business. Consider approval of a term sheet with Oakdale Irrigation District for Water Transfer. Staff, please.
Honorable Mayor, Reverend Tan, councilmembers, good evening. I'll try to be brief, as this is the third time you've heard this item, but let me kind of get us all back into the, to the same milieu. So we are talking about a term sheet here, and I want to focus on the fact that it is not an agreement. It's a term sheet, and what that means is that it would be an agreed-upon framework for negotiations for a possible future agreement. Approving the term sheet would initiate the environmental review that all the agencies in the state need, or in the case of the stakeholders, want to review for the environmental impact review that's presently underway for the project out of the development, out at the Baylands. And so why is the term sheet even being discussed? Well, that development is presently under environmental review, as I mentioned, and it's required by state law to demonstrate an adequate supply of water, which the city cannot supply based on our current agreement with SFPUC. So the developer was able to find a potential seller of water, and the two agencies' staffs subsequently developed a draft term sheet. Now, who is this other agency? The other agency is the Oakdale Irrigation District. Oakdale has previously transferred 40,000 acre-feet a year of water, and I want to note that the amount of water we're considering in this term sheet is 2,400 acre-feet per year. Now, through a series of proposed transfers, the water we would receive under any future agreement would be the same water that we presently receive. It would be to all new water for behind Hetch Hetchy. And as a point of interest, the Oakdale Irrigation District did, in fact, approve the term sheet with revisions previously requested by the city council and by the subcommittee, and they would approve those on their meeting at October the 2nd. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any further clarifications.
All right. Terry?
I want to thank the council and mayor for putting this off for further discussion to allow me to be here as I was not at the prior meeting, and I really appreciate that. I was able to listen to that portion of the meeting and for the discussion that they had on October 1st, and was impressed with the amount of information that was given and by the speakers and the concerns that they had, especially the Sierra Club that brought up many of the concerns that I've had as far as the water and where it's coming from and the effect it'll have on their supply. I also found it very interesting that it's water that is, or the agreement is just an idea of an agreement. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is an agreement. Listening to, or reading some articles that I saw in the, in the newspapers after the vote that the Oakdale Water District had to approve this, they said publicly to a reporter, if the quote is right, that this isn't a done deal, we're going to get better, we're going to get more from Brisbane about this. That worries me, that they don't, while they're agreeing to this term sheet, they're telling their people they're going to get more, and that's...
SGPC paying for it, that's the case in the end, but I don't...
Well, it's also of concern that it's doubling our water use, and, and I, while I, I think that the language that we've revised it to has been very well thought out and hopefully saves Brisbane from being responsible for it, and I assume that that will be done. I'm not sure everyone else is going to go along with the agreement, and all the negotiations are going to fall into place, but it does put it in context that the water is there as far as for the, in theory, for the purpose of the EIR. And my concern is, we do the EIR based on the alleged availability of the water and the possibility that this term sheet could be negotiated and passed through all the SEQA and the other environmental. And project A, B, or C gets approved, and then there's no water. And then what development rights does the developer have? Are we giving an indication that, that's going to be snatched back and we're going to be told after the fact, oh, well, you approved this project or this use, and now there's no water, what are you going to do about it? So that gives me a little cause for thought and holding back on saying, sure, go ahead and negotiate, because it is a very unspecific term sheet that, that I, I have worries about. So... Anyone have any thoughts about my comments?
So, yeah, Hal.
I guess we have to approach this kind of schizophrenic by saying it's not binding, and then there are concerns, what happens if it's not binding? But the reality is that we will eventually have a development agreement with the developer, and no project goes forward without that. That development agreement is kind of the umbrella document that will incorporate all of the other project approvals, the zoning, the subdivision, and what have you, but included in that package will be the contracts for water supply. And as indicated even in the term sheet, there's still a lot of work to be done. We need an agreement, a final agreement, not only with Oakdale, but also an agreement with MID, and then an agreement with San Francisco PUC for the delivery of the water to the city. All of those agreements will need to be in place and signed, and at that point, we're not dealing with term sheets anymore, we're dealing with enforceable contracts, which are then all incorporated into the final development agreement. So the scenario you're concerned about, I guess I would simply have to say, should not occur, because we would not grant the development approvals to begin with until we had the water locked in with all of the appropriate agreements, which cannot be signed until we've done all of the SEQA reviews and all the other preliminary work that's necessary. So that would be the sequence of events, but step one is the EIR. We can't do anything in terms of processing any alternative, regardless of what it is, without the EIR, and state law says you can't do the EIR unless you've identified a potential and, you know, source of water. And that's what the term sheet is intended to do, and that's all it's intended to do, is to, is to show for SEQA purposes that we have a water supply. Now, whether that's ultimately going to be the water supply still is dependent on other contracts being signed, but we're only trying to satisfy the limited requirement of SEQA at this point of showing the availability of water. We're not granting a development approval, we're not locking ourselves into anything, and neither are they for that matter. So, well, we can say, we could try to negotiate a cheaper price, they're equally free to say, to say they can try to negotiate a better price. The fact of the matter is, the price has not yet been finally negotiated in a binding agreement. These are simply the preliminary terms for SEQA purposes. So I hope that answers your question, but I just don't see us in a situation where we're saying to the developer, go ahead and develop, by the way, you don't have any water, because we would not even be granting that approval to begin with until these contracts are signed.
Thank you, Hal. One comment that you made makes me wary. You said that should not occur, that... You said, "That should not occur," that we run into these problems.
Well, I'll replace the word "will" with... instead of "should," if that's... I did not intend that to be...
Ambiguous?
Ambiguous, yes.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to review the tape until today due to my technical difficulties. And a couple comments were made by the Sierra Club about a Mammoth Lakes lawsuit over water development, water rights, and I have absolutely no context to put that in. Can anyone here give me any enlightenment, enlightened on that?
I'm afraid I can't. I did some brief looking, but I wasn't sure which suit they were talking about. They simply said Mammoth Lakes, they didn't identify the court or give any citation, so I don't know what that suit was about. There's litigation involving water all the time, but I'm afraid I can't really respond to that. I don't know the details of that lawsuit. It may have involved a different factual scenario, so I just don't know.
And then the concerns raised by the Tuolumne River Trust about the procurement of water from that source. Have we had any research as far as that goes, or is that something that we would feel that just would be SEQA review and not of a concern on our decision here?
Well, certainly the concerns that the TRT has expressed are items that would have to be analyzed and evaluated during the SEQA review, but we haven't gone down that path yet, because we don't have any sort of term sheet. We don't have any sort of non-binding, binding document, to kind of use Hal's schizophrenic term, to begin down a path of analysis, although most of the questions that they raised were concerns against a similar document that had previously been certified, that had analyzed it. So, from that perspective, there wasn't EIR, it was the Water Supply Improvement Program, programmatic environmental impact report that SFPUC did, and at that point in time, they had specifically talked about taking another 2 million gallons per day of water off there, and that document was previously, as I said, certified by City and County of San Francisco. So, I would anticipate a similar outcome, but that's all I can do is anticipate. I can't really comment on it further until we actually do the analysis.
And would the SFPUC's certified document be the basis of the SEQA review, or would it be incorporated as part of the SEQA review that we would be doing? Or would that document not be considered relative? I know a lot of these SEQA documents will rely on a previous document to substantiate a claim one way or another, and so I'm just wondering, is that document specific or relatable to our document as a building stone?
No, I don't believe it would be as a building stone, ma'am. In that case, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission was the lead agency, and they were responsible for it. I don't believe that we were even a responsible agency, but I think the analysis will end up being the same. And the reason I offer that is because the analysis is still going to be on the taking of the additional 2 million gallons a day of water off the Tuolumne between O'Shaughnessy Dam and New Don Pedro. So, I think that the hydrologic analysis that are going to happen and the potential impacts to the flora and fauna are expected to be the same unless new information has occurred since the time that that environmental impact review was done, and ours will be done.
And do you know the date that theirs was certified?
No, not...
Or approximate?
Within the last four or five years, ma'am.
Okay. And we know that in the case of our last EIR that we were involved in, 20 years is good data. So, 20-year-old data seems to be typically taken as fact. So, it's really hard to change guidelines and data once something's been entered into the record. I find it interesting, the reason, on a separate note, that Oakdale Irrigation is in failing, needs infrastructure upgrades, and so selling their water to us or to the developer is a way to put the costs to someone else rather than their residents, which we all understand is an important thing, to try to defer the costs for your own residents and put it off on the other guy. We'd all like that to happen. So, I always wonder... I mean, we know where their motivations are, is to help their infrastructure. So, I think those are the comments or questions I wanted to make, for the most part. And do we have any other public?
Yeah, we have a slip. Any other questions?
I withhold mine until I hear from the public.
Okay. Mike Ferrera? Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
I did better last week.
I did also. Ferrera?
Ferrera.
Sorry.
Mayor Lentz, council members, board member extraordinaire, Richardson, and council member O'Connell. Mike Ferrera, Sierra Club. My reference to Mammoth Lakes was more to the fickleness of the courts when a small town gets engaged in large projects. What actually happened there was that there was a project that was probably dormant and might never have gone through, but there was an agreement in place. And because the council tried to clean the books, they asked the airport people, the federal airport people, to exercise some kind of law to clear something up, and for that, they got held in breach of contract for $30 million for a project that probably never would have been built. So, I just, you know, I like Brisbane, Sierra Club likes Brisbane, but you're stepping into some deep stuff here, and a phrase that keeps coming to mind is "a little bit pregnant." And what I thought I heard was that this is the first step in a process that would gradually decrease your flexibility, and you're going to end up being bound into this in a development agreement. It's hard for me to understand why this term sheet is so essential if it has no weight, because theoretically, it would be a four-party agreement, and there's only two parties, they're only partially in agreement, and it's not binding. And so, it's hard to see how binding that is, or why it's necessary. And so, Mike, the Sierra Club doesn't like this kind of thing. We just don't. In the last two weeks, we haven't changed our mind. We, you know, 2,400 more acre-feet out of the Tuolumne is not a thing that we support, and we would rather have this supply come from some other quarter. You know, we probably will be giving our opinion in the EIR, if you have a comment period. Probably give our opinions along with the Tuolumne River Trust and maybe even Save the Bay when it gets to Modesto for their decision. And we just would rather not be in that position relative to Brisbane. So, that's all I can say for tonight. Thank you.
All right. I hope if it does go through, that we can still be friends.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a comment that... Our comment period is 120 or 180 or 160? What is it?
You chose 120 days.
120 days, okay. And that's from the point of adoption of the draft?
Issuance of the draft.
Issuance of the draft?
Yes.
Okay. So, when the draft is issued, and we're looking at November, one of the last pieces is this non-binding framework?
Yep. My understanding, and the staff can correct me if I don't have this completely right, but once the council approves the term sheet, then we will have to go forward and do a new notice of preparation, which there is a 30-day period of time on that. But there's actually some work that still needs to be done on the document, so that's probably not going to delay it any further, but that's a step that has to take place.
So, we're looking like November, December, January timeframe?
Well, I think at this point, we're probably looking at December, maybe January.
January.
Okay.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Michael Barnes, Brisbane resident. Civilization began about 10,000 years ago, and it began because of irrigation. When mankind learned how to move water from one place to another, it allowed him to become stationary. He no longer had to hunt and gather. He could sit in one place and think, and that developed our current civilization. About 7,000 years ago, the Sumerians mastered irrigation, and that led to the beginnings of what we consider modern civilization. 4,300 years ago, the Romans built their first aqueduct, and it led to a great civilization. Today, we drink water from Hetch-Echey. So, the conveyance of water is absolutely intrinsic to our lives, to our civilization. And tonight, after a month and a half of thinking about a term sheet, you're talking, you're thinking, hopefully, about the conveyance of water to improve our civilization here in Brisbane. This water is absolutely vital to the cleanup and the development of the Baylands, and I think the council is beginning to realize how important the development of the Baylands is to the city's survival. I think I've heard about recology, expanding garbage operations in the Baylands, and that's part of Baylands development. So, this term sheet is absolutely vital to the survival of Brisbane. I've been saying the same thing for some number of years, and hopefully, you all are agreeing now. There is one additional wrinkle I would like to add, and I've mentioned this before as well, and that is, the schools of Brisbane are facing extinction as well. And I believe the schools of Brisbane actually need the cleanup and the development of the Baylands more than the city does, because the schools can't raise adequate taxes, whereas the city can tax a use of, for instance, moving dirt, or can tax fuel movement, or can tax garbage recycling. The schools cannot. The schools have just about tapped out their ability to tax the citizens of Brisbane in order to support the continued existence of the schools of Brisbane. So, for that reason as well, I think it's absolutely vital that the city approve the term sheet and begin negotiations and get the draft EIR for the Baylands issued, because we're all running out of time, because we're all running out of money. And I think the Baylands, regardless of what goes out there, need to be addressed in order for Brisbane and its schools to survive. Now, I know you are not the school board for the children of Brisbane or their parents, but without Brisbane's schools, it would tear this community apart. It would make this a much less desirable place to live. I think it's absolutely vital we retain our own school district and our own schools, a small school district. So, please, 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 after a month and a half of getting comfortable with the term sheet, please approve it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else out in the audience who'd like to speak? Anyone raising their hand? All right, council discussion.
I see you and I'm assuming, Terry, that you had your hand in refining some of the wording in here.
I'll put most of that...
On Ray.
On Ray. But I agree that it's a much better document and that it hopefully will protect Brisbane if it's passed. I still feel it's a document that could come back to bite us one way or another, even though we have assurances from our attorney.
I'm going to make an assumption, you're probably not going to make the motion.
I did want to comment one...
I could finish mine.
I know where you're going with that.
I do want to make one comment, though, that I don't think that the health of Brisbane is dependent on the Baylands' development, because I think we are a healthy, vibrant community, whatever way development, or whatever development ends up going on at the Baylands, and that it's a separate school district from us, and that the public should not be looking at the Baylands or any other development as a salvation for Brisbane, because I think that we have a strong community, and however this all plays out, we're going to continue to be a strong community. And so, I don't think that we can base it on doom and gloom or say, "This is your only option." And I have faith in Brisbane too, and others, to make sure that whatever goes out in the Baylands is adequately reviewed and studied, and that we get the best project possible out there.
No, well said.
If I could finish. I didn't mean to pass it off to you.
It looked like a pass.
No, it wasn't a pass. But Terry took it, having us worked very well. Yeah. It was lateral. It was...
There you go. A shovel pass.
Yeah. No, I mean, you know, I did really want to say kudos to the ad hoc committee on the work on rearranging the language to make it, you know, just exactly what it is, as a term sheet. I was, you know, comfortable with the way it was before. Now, I don't have that fear that we're locking ourselves into something, because, you know, I mean, it's a term sheet, and in order for the EIR to move forward on the Baylands, this needs to take place. If it doesn't, it all stops tonight. UPC's rep will walk out of here pissed off, there's no other way to put it. I think staff would too, and we've worked, you know, a lot of years on processing this whole thing, and this is a major part of it, is to identify where the water would come from. Not necessarily means that that will be where it comes from or anything like that. You know, I mean, whether the project happens or not, I mean, you know, we're not bound to approve anything, but we are bound, I believe, to approve the processing, processing of the whole project, if I'm correct. But approving it, that's a whole different deal. And as I think Hal eloquently spelled out, how the approval of this is going to go down is with the development agreement and then Oakdale and... to go down is with the development agreement, and then Oakdale and the City of Brisbane have to agree on that, and then you've got San Francisco PUC has to agree on it. So, you know, there's, so a four-party entities that have to agree upon this whole thing. So, I mean, what it is, is the term sheet to allow for us to move forward on the environmental impact report on the Baylands. And I'm comfortable with that, and, and I'm ready to, to move forward with that. And you can consider that a motion, but I-
I guess so.
But I know I want to hear.
Ray, if you'd like to go ahead, I have no problem. Did you want to go?
After you.
One of the things that really frustrates me is we say that, "Let's get more information. Let's do more. Let's do more." And then come back and say, "Okay, we did all that great work. Let's just toss them and say, 'We don't want it.'" I was very, very comfortable with the fact that you had a lot of concern. You had concerns. We set up this subcommittee to really look at it and rewrite this language to make it workable. And I don't like when I hear things that our future depends, or we're not going to survive without the Baylands with this water, just threatening, not giving the facts that is really not accurate. With the things that I've heard, I really appreciated the fact that talked about the community's value of ensuring the highest level of water quality. This is what this is about. We should not bring the development in. We're talking about having a vital source of water for that area and start going through the other phases. So I appreciate the fact that you two have done a lot of work. I'm very comfortable with everything that you guys proposed. And I also respect, Terry, that you still have some concerns. I wish that I was at the point that I would say, "Okay, I can back out and give you more time. Maybe you would see some other..." But I don't think so. I think you're pretty solid on this. So with that, I'd like to second your motion to go ahead with this.
You guys, you, okay. So Ray?
Yeah, I only have a couple of remarks to make. You know, I'm comfortable, as one can be, that the language in the term sheet really protects Brisbane. And that was my whole intent, to make sure that it was clear that-
Right.
You know, we're not going to get stuck. As clear as language can make.
Right.
And I again want to thank Hal for helping that language get crafted and included in the current version of the term sheet. And I am comfortable that we've, you know, done the best we could. Doesn't mean it's perfect. There's still risks involved, there always are in life, but I'm comfortable that this is the best we can do, and in terms of protecting ourselves. And also that it's primarily for the purpose of, you know, completing the EIR, because we do want to get on with that. And this does seem to be a necessity for that point of view. But I do want to point out that, you know, even though it's being studied and they're going to look at the amount of water that's being mentioned here and the sources that are being identified and so forth, eventually, that doesn't mean we have to have that agreement, nor do we have to, really have to take that amount of water. I mean, who knows what's going to happen eventually? I mean, you know, Mike was mentioning last time that maybe we can do the whole thing with conservation, you know? Well, maybe we can. But that's something to look at down the road, as, you know, the different possibilities as to how we deal with this essential ingredient. Obviously, you've got to deal with the water somehow. So in light of, you know, that reasoning, I'm comfortable, you know, supporting the term sheet and would support the motion.
Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for the excellent reports that they gave us and providing excellent feedback when we asked questions, when the community asked the questions. And I think we really did a great job of educating everyone. Of course, you're not going to always please everyone, but you do your best to get the information out there. And like Ray says, there's always risks in life, and you try and minimize the risks. And I think we've done an excellent job of doing that. I appreciate the work that Ad Hoc Subcommittee did. I think it provided a better document for all of us to, I think, accept and move forward with. Like Parker said, in order for us to move forward with the EIR that we all would like to see happen, we need to show that there's adequate supply of water for the development. Does that become the eventual supply of water? Who knows? But this is what is acceptable, to move the process forward. And that's what, that's what we're trying to do, is to move the process forward. So, yeah, I think it's been a great collaboration of getting this information out to the community. So I want to thank you all for that. I know we have a motion, and we have a second. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Me, Kenneth?
Okay. So we have one against, so we have four ayes.
May I? I just want to thank again, you did make a special comment about Sierra, Sierra-
Club.
Club. I wanted to say Sierra Point, but I didn't want, I want to tell you that I really appreciate the work that you do. It is amazing how involved you are in the work that you do, and I love you for it. And I always want to support the efforts that you have. And the thing that really was a little bit kind of troublesome for me, that knowing the fact that Brisbane conserves tremendous amount of water, we're really good, we're one of the best cities in this county that we conserve water. And there, it seems like there is no, maybe that's not, I think more recognition need to be given to that. And the future needs might be impacted with our really great job we do with the conservation of water that we have. And I want more recognition on that, I guess. So I love you and thank you for that.
Okay. So how are we all feeling about moving on to the next item?
We should take a break, probably.
Okay.
Take a break.
Everybody's working under pressure.
You know, I need that little red button thing to stick it right. Okay.
Counsel is on break.
I'm keeping up with you this time. I came prepared. Because I'm, what is it? Nine hours.